Good morning. Today is Wednesday, September the first, 2021. Notice it's hereby given that a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas will be held on this date at this time. We are at the Grimes County Annex Building 114, West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. This meeting is now called to order. It's nine o'clock. I would ask if you would, please rise from the invitation and remain standing to the pledges of the U.S. and the Texas Department. If you would, would you pray with me, please? Father, we're grateful and thankful for this day. We're thankful for the blessings of this life, Father, for the opportunity to serve. We ask that you be with this court in the decisions that we make, that we make them in good spirit, good mind, and good conscience, that we do the best, we make the best decisions for the citizens of Grimes County. Father, again, we thank you for that opportunity to serve. We ask that you be with each and every one of our first responders, whether they're law enforcement, whether they're medical, whether they're volunteer firemen and women. Father, we just ask that you keep them safe as they keep us safe. We thank you for the opportunities you present to us. We pray that we make the most of each and every one of them, and it's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. If you'd be seated, please. Thank you. We'll now go to public comments. Did you get any responses, Ms. County Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, do y'all have any public comments that y'all would like to share?
I have one for Food Factory Anderson. We'll be open tomorrow morning, late until around noon.
Okay. Andrew, are we okay on the microphones today, do you think?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other public comments? I will make one. If you don't have anything to do this evening, today is September the first of 2021, and it's my understanding 666 new laws take effect. So if you need something to do, you could start looking up those 660-plus laws and get yourself up to date with what's gonna change or happen or whatever. With that, we're gonna move to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six, number seven. And number seven on the budget amendments, I believe there's nine or 10 of those. I think it's 10. So again, consent agenda items number three, road and bridge, consideration of possible approval of a waterline installation permit for Wixon Creek on County Road 180 in Precinct Three, and authorize the county judge's signatory, and item four, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. And be aware that there were two sets because there wasn't any expenditure for juvenile on the first one, but there is an expenditure for juvenile on the second one. Agenda item number five, consider and take action to approve payroll. Agenda item number six, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for July 2021 and authorize advisement of affidavit upstanding in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. See page six of this agenda. Agenda item number seven, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. Good commissioners, that would be it, other than the budget adjustments that you have presented in front of me.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, five, six, and seven.
Second. There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items three, four, five, six, and seven by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We will now go to agenda item number eight on our agenda, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Mr. Al Peeler, update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Jail, Grimes County Justice Center. Mr. Peeler?
Good morning.
Commissioners, Judge?
We'll start off with the jail. Jail is, mold remediation is complete. We had some issues with, the last time I think I gave my report, we had some issues of our air handlers and our rooftop units. We have that now figured out. We had some, you hear me beat my same old drum, my preventive maintenance in previous years wasn't the best, so now that we're up and running and we have got that lined out, it's doing what it's supposed to do. It's holding about 61%, 62% humidity. Not where I like it, but it's a rooftop air, so totally different than a chiller and boiler system. Besides that, we had a, it's, we're preparing right now for, we know we got jail standards coming in here within the next three or four months, so we are starting that approach on cleaning stuff that has been destroyed by inmates or stuff like that to make us presentable.
Do you think your new, your stainless steel charstalls have been by the jail standards?
Man, I was, Judge, I was hoping they would have been in two months ago, but we know they're done. We've got that email, and I'm hoping that our installation is gonna be done next month, I'm hoping. If not, Madam Auditor is gonna be chewing on my right ear and I just see-
You said Madam Auditor?
Uh huh.
I said, I said- Madam Auditor.
No, I said that.
You're working on that floor.
I'm trying to go up instead of down, okay?
That's why I wanted to clarify that.
As far, as far as the jail, we're, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be a process. It's, I just gotta weed through one system at a time, and we're gonna get there. What helps us today is Junior Covington has returned to work today. This morning was his first day, and boy, did I go, even at the half-capacity he's running, he's gonna be able to train the person that's gonna take his job. He's just a wealth of knowledge. So that, on that front, we're looking up.
Sure.
Any questions about the jail?
Sure.
Moving on to Justice Center. Justice Center is, we'll start with the weather delay. It's 150 days so far. They're making progress, very good progress inside. Just some things that, now that I'm seeing that I don't like, that I want addressed, marks, you know, just a little stuff that I'm not gonna accept until it's fixed. So that's where we're at in the painting and drywall. Weather, our furniture, as of yesterday, when I talked to Jennifer, will be October 25th delivered. We have-
Is that, I'm sorry, is that from both vendors?
Yes.
They're both on the same bed?
Yes.
It's very-
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we have our moving bid pre-conference on Friday. I'll be in and out of people's offices talking, getting them to realize what we are looking at with a tentative date. We're not gonna be able to give them a full move-on date until I get a little closer to substantial completion.
And we're still on the idea of moving department by department, by department?
Yes.
Food basket turnover, everybody moves on Friday or-
No, you can't. You'll kill maintenance and IT department in a single swoop.
I think planning it together is the right way to do it. I just wanna make sure you're-
Yes. So we are moving department to department, and it's gonna be a two-day, two-to-three-day transition. I haven't worked that out yet. I plan on working that out. There's gonna be some two-day, there's gonna be some three-day, the way it's shaping up right now. So that's in the works. We'll go to project modification proposals. Wanna touch on that a little bit. We're still working balance, right now is 97,000. Our last was the parking island concrete finish. We, we had to take $3,782 out because of a contingency, because we found an island that had a tree in it, so we had to do some different parking around that, and that's at the very end of the parking lot by the sheriff's entrance. I didn't realize that island had a tree in it, so we had to do some adjustment there. Nothing really new, except, nothing really new. I mean, not anything of importance except for the tree, in my mind.
I'll ask Commissioner, Val and Commissioner Cox, if y'all have anything to add since y'all are the building committee representatives. Any issues or concerns y'all have or?
Working steadily and trying to get it done.
Okay.
The two-week look ahead, is this sheet? It pretty well, it pretty well states what we're doing. It's coming along really fast. So it's taking a lot of my time just to make sure that we're getting, it worries me when we go fast, you know, not steady, but they're doing a very good job. Our millwork has taken us the longest because it's build a piece, bring a piece, build a piece, bring a piece. So we got some, we got a meeting on tomorrow with the architect. He's gonna, he's talking about washing brick and stuff like that, so I need to find out where he stands, but right now there isn't anything that's, that has caught my eye that's a worry for the court. Any questions on the Justice Center? All right. That's, that's my report unless-
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Glad to have Junior back. That's-
Me too.
That's an assist.
Me too.
With that, we'll go to agenda item number nine, Grimes County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski. Consider and take action to approve the sheriff and constable fees to be effective January 1, 2022. See attachment number nine. This is an annual process that we go through in the event they, the sheriffs or the constables have a fee adjustment that comes through the county clerk. Ms. Vanessa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. So I did contact each of the constable's offices via email, as well as the sheriff's office, and asked them if they had any recommendations as to whether or not they wanted to change any of these fees, and they all indicated that they were fine with keeping all of the fees the same as they were last year. So the attachment is just the current fees that we are charging. And again, as Judge DeFau said, we are required by law to bring this before court each year in September to be approved, whether there is any changes or not, and then I will report that to the state.
Do you know, that I should have asked you before right now, but by statute, do you know, are any of these fees at the maximum?
Actually, the fees vary greatly between, between county to county, and if you go to the controller's website, you can pull up each county and see what they charge, and so it's, it's all over.
Well, what I'm asking is, though, where we have subpoenas, $100?
I don't-
Do subpoenas have a range of zero to $200?
No, it's all left up to the court. There's no minimum or no maximum.
Have you done a comparison?
I did, when I looked at this last year, I did. I did like a spreadsheet with like surrounding counties and what they charge, and then other counties have other fees that we don't have listed, like, we don't list our stray fees, but I know they have them, things like that.
For the most, what I recall in my review last year, is that most of our fees are kind of under surrounding counties in comparison.
Yeah, they're, they're in line or a little under. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the sheriff and constable fees to be effective January 1, 2022.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Agenda item number 10, County Commissioner Barbara Walker. Consider and take action to approve the order for online education for county commissioners and authorize the county judges signatory. It's our attachment number 10.
Yes, sir. This is something new that we, that has been presented to us, and we are presenting it to the court today. It is an order to approve online education for county commissioners, whereas Local Government Code has amended by the 86th legislature, authorizes online instruction for commissioners continuing education with approval of the Commissioners' Court, except for a county commissioner in the first 12-month period of the commissioner's first term, whereas the county commissioners of Grimes County, Texas wishes to authorize online instruction of commissioners continuing education as permitted by the statute. It is hereby ordered that the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas approves and authorize online instruction for the continuing education of county commissioners, except for a county commissioner in the first 12-month period of the commissioner's first term. And it is further ordered that a copy of this order shall be submitted to the Commissioners' Education Committee of the County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas. This is so that if we choose to go online to get our 16 hours of continuing education, that it will be approved. So now, we now have to have the permission of the court, and that is what I'm bringing to you today.
Prior to this order, in explanation, all of our training had to be done in person. Is this, or some, not all of it, to be done online?
That is correct, and because with COVID, so much of the onsite trainings were canceled, this was an adjustment made to keep everybody up to speed, I guess, on 660-plus laws that are occurring, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if this is going to stay, but for now, it's, it's a good option that we can exercise for you, Commissioner.
And firstly, was authorized under the governor, and now it's become part of the local government code, and most of the conferences we're going now, we have the option of going hybrid, which is either online or in person. So it is my recommendation that this be brought to the county so that we would have that option.
So are you making a motion on, then, on agenda item number 10?
I am. I make a motion to approve the order for online education for the county commissioners and authorize county judges signatory.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We will have a, the vote will be tabulated on the document that is signed and sent in. So that will be five days and zero nays.
Judge, we just made, make one clerical error. They misspelled my last name on the very bottom before we sign it and send it in.
Okay. Will you make that adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, discuss and take action for repairs to St. Joseph's Hospital and EMS Station. Our attachment to number 11. Again, Commissioner Walker.
Well, you've heard, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kirk Simonin, who is administrative. I'll let you introduce your title, sir.
I'm the Director of Operations Administrator of the Grimes Hospital.
And we also have Mr. Billy Rice, who is Director of our EMS Services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And also Kurt Huber Driver.
I would.
He put that to the prison the other day for me, thankfully.
Oh, yeah.
We've been in meetings recently with our own Mr. Al Peeler, the administration over at St. Joseph, Mr. Harry Walker, and also EMS. So we've identified these projects, which we call capital improvement projects, which are part of our contract, and that these should be bought before the court, before the budget is approved every year. So I wanted to bring these capital improvements to the court and explain a little bit about what's going on. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was, and you've heard us talk about the chiller, this whole budget cycle, so I'm bringing that before you, that this is an improvement that we recognize. We found out doing 2020, was it '21, this year?
Are you referring to the chiller or the generator?
Chiller, chiller, the Cummins, thank you.
The generator. Yes, ma'am. That happened, it failed during the freeze in February.
Okay, and we realized this, this generator is over 50 years old or somewhere along that line, so we looked at repair estimates, and we decided that, between the two of us, or the committee and us, we decided that it's best to replace it. And so we've been talking about those improvements, and if you notice, some of our, most of the contract talks about going halves on everything. There were also, along with that, some emergency repairs that had been presented to us in a total of $6,843.59, which are reimbursable amount, because they have so much, we have so much time to respond, and they can also move forward with an emergency if they identify it as an emergency. So they have moved forward with some of the improvements that they made, and our portion of that would be about $34,421. In our talks recently, we identified a few more projects that need to happen this year that are capital improvement projects, and part of it is some of the work we're gonna be doing with the generator. And so these amounts that I am seeking the court to reimburse St. Joseph on, we've decided that maybe we could back off of that amount some in order that St. Joseph may move forward with getting the electrical engineering work done in order for this generator to be put in. We're not sure that if we did it on St. Joseph's part, it may be a while before we can get started. So what St. Joseph is suggesting, or what the committee and I have come up with, rather than approve all of the reimbursements, back off enough to where we can go ahead and get the electrical engineering started before the end of this year, so that it doesn't fall into next year's budget, which would impede that budget a little bit more. So this would help take some of the load off if we go ahead and we approve the electrical work that needs to be done in this particular budget by the end of December 31st. And if we order the work to be done, then it moves a little bit faster than St. Joseph moves, because we've been working on this now for almost the entire year, once we identified we had a problem. So it is my recommendation, and Al, would you like to recommend that, your recommendation on how you would like to proceed? He is going to be taking over those facilities at the beginning of the year. He's got a preventive maintenance plan.
When you say the beginning of the year, you're talking October 1, beginning of the year?
October 1, October 1. And I'd like to say, I really appreciate his expertise, because I don't know if many people know it or not, but we've always had a janitorial department. It wasn't until recent years, one or two years, that we started having a maintenance program, and the hope is to have a roving maintenance for all of our facilities that are now going to fall under Mr. Peeler. So he's been very involved in everything that's going on, and they have a new maintenance director over at the hospital, too, and they have agreed, they're gonna sit down and work out a plan, besides what we talked about the other day. We have, on your spreadsheet, we did identify some other things that are of the utmost importance that we get on right away. Some of them have moved up to scale. So we also identified some HVAC needs, some mechanical, some plumbing needs, so we'd like to go ahead and try to get some of those things worked out with their remaining portion of their budget, which is $45,838.
Do you mind if I add something?
Mm-hmm.
So the reason for the need for the electrical engineer is that the current generator that is there, when it was installed 40-plus years ago, the electrical code was much different for healthcare, and so there are some electrical code concerns that we have, that the wiring and things that run into the building are not what they need to be, and so we have to get electrical engineer to redesign that, make sure we have the right-sized generator for that facility. There's been a lot of electrical changes over the years, and we'll make sure that they identify the appropriate generator and the size and kilowatts, and design it to where it'll be as effective as we can. There was also some additional expense for cranes and things. We're gonna try and remove that from the scope of the work and just move the generator closer to the building so the length of the wiring need will be less, so the cost should come down. And so we just wanna make sure that we do this appropriately, and we don't have the expertise in house to be able to do that. So to make sure we don't spend our money and your money ineffectively, we wanna make sure we bring in the right people to address that.
And I would like to say that St. Joseph, I think the last major work that we did over there was in 2015 when we installed chillers, when Commissioner Finke was still alive. That was the last major chiller that we had put in, and we're identifying some needs that need to be corrected, or need to be had done.
We've made a lot of improvements this year. Currently, they're putting, I think, three new HVAC systems on top of the building that were damaged by hail, that we got on insurance, and then new roof, and quite a few other improvements that we're making to the building that the hospital is covering at this point, so we're trying to bring everything up.
And you're invested, they've invested into the building, which belongs to Grimes County, just in case somebody didn't know, it was, it was a gift, gifted to Grimes County.
Refreshing inside, come in, the new flooring, new patient rooms are being repainted and new artwork, and so it's gonna look very nice.
I'd also like to ask, since you mentioned that, we identified three units that needed to be replaced, or when you talked about those, you just spoke of, are those the same unit?
No, ma'am.
No, it's a gift.
We're going to check, so Al's recommendation, he had asked us to check to see if the issues with the two chillers that are on, that y'all replaced, I guess, in 15, if the issues we're having with those, with the coil leaks, were due to the freeze, and see if we can get it added. So we're in the process of doing that.
So in order for us to move forward, you know, right at the beginning of the year, when Al comes on board, even prior to that, with the remaining budget that they- when Al comes on board, even prior to that, with the remaining budget that they have, you know, we're just trying to bring all of that to the court, like the contract states.
So I met with Kurt and Commissioner Walker, Julio, I don't know his last name.
Ricardo Diaz-Arques.
Ricardo. At first, I thought this was going to be a daunting task because of preventive maintenance and just a lot of things that have fallen over age of the time of the building. I left that meeting going, I felt good about the person they put in charge, or in charge of their maintenance. I think it's going to be a great relationship between Grimes County Maintenance Department and St. Joe, is it still St. Joe, or is it Cross Point?
No, it's St. Joe.
St. Joe, okay. St. Joe's Maintenance Department. I felt, I felt good about this, the proposal that you're, that's in front of you. I totally agree with how we need to do this. That will let the strain off of us a little bit. We always knew, and from my previous talks to the court about the hospital, we know we have some electrical stuff that we have to upgrade. It's just, but this is also going to be just like the jail. It's going to be a slow process of getting it done, because neither they or us have the money just to go in and do it all at one time. I'm going to sit down with Julio in the near future, and we're going to develop a working preventive maintenance for both of our departments. We don't want it to be so demanding on their department, and we don't want it to be so demanding on our department that it's unachievable. So that's my goal for the hospital. I feel, I feel good after the meeting we had. I believe Kurt and Commissioner Walker has come up with a plan on this generator that could save us money in the long run, if you do pass this.
Commissioner, if you could summarize for me, so I make sure I can have this, I'm understanding. The electrical, the outside expertise to come in and do the electrical review, when do we anticipate that to occur?
Okay, that amount that we're talking about is $29,700. And we're hoping that we can get it done on our part.
In the 2021 budget?
Yes, before the end of September.
That's the scope of work.
Okay, but is, is that, the reason I'm asking, is that going to be doable for that outside company to come and do their analysis, so that we don't track over into 2022, so that a monitor doesn't get upset?
That's the plan.
That is the plan.
All right. And do you think we have outside expertise that can do that?
Yes, we have.
As our plan?
We have a proposal from a company to be able to do that.
I've seen.
And then the $29,700 comes out of whose pocket?
Ours.
Grimes County?
Out of their line of.
Out of their line of.
And you have that available?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker has it available.
Of $45,800.
Okay. Which they will take all, correct me if I'm wrong, they will take all that, they, $29,700 plus, will pay some of their emergency repairs.
I just wanted to know how much, and which budget, and when?
Absolutely.
So we stay in line.
The emergency repairs, though, have already been paid for by St. Joseph's, right? So we're reimbursing.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's okay in the timeline then?
As long as y'all approve those expenses were necessary.
And that's what we're talking about, instead of the entire amount for the reimbursements that they have already spent, all of the repairs, they would ask that the court approve the electrical engineering that has to be done for a total of $29,700.
It's only, it's only fast-tracking the process to get a generator, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt, they have a rental generator right now in case.
That's correct.
So it's only fast-tracking, fast-track, fast-tracking the generator process, so we can get off.
You got to get a permit, so we get rid of the rental.
That's it, absolutely correct.
Okay, with that being said, that's, that's where we are on that. The other thing that I was bringing up was the EMS station. We are anticipating, we are anticipating the sale of our Roden Bridge Building out in Stoneham, a move of the EMS building. Hopefully, we were looking at trying to get it done by the end of September, but because the money for that is not available until the first of the year, which is October 1st, we're going to be anticipating moving that building once the circuit is installed. So I'm just bringing the court up to speed on the conversations that we've been having, so that everybody will be on the same page. We'll be notifying St. Joseph that we might have to relocate your services there for a time until we give everything coordinated. It's a lot of moving parts, you know, getting, build and move, getting the circuit put in, getting the electrical, and everybody moves at their own speed, so it can be daunting at times. So I don't even have to tell Mr. Walker that, he's probably frustrated and tired with, footed with it by now, but we're moving forward with, we do have the bid of pokes in for the circuit system, and once that's installed, we'll try to move everything really fast, so that he can proceed with the auction. But that's the update on the EMS.
We have a contractor lined up for the skirting and the porches and things, get those moved, so just when you have a timeframe for that, let us know, we'll coordinate that with you.
So that, that's what I'm bringing to you today. Like I said, according to the document, any capital improvement project should be bought before the budget is approved.
What about the electrical on that, in Stoneham?
They met with M.G. yesterday. Now, I don't know what they came out with, but she had a meeting yesterday with them. So I am asking that the court will.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to give the county clerk a heads up, so they can capture your.
All right, I'm trying to do this, okay? I am asking that the court approve the repairs to, the identified repairs to St. Joseph Hospital, and also those of the EMS station for the remainder of this year and the upcoming year of 2022, the projects that we have identified. And if there's anything else comes up during the year, Al will be overseeing those. And we are asking that the court also approve the electrical engineering for $29,700, and approve reimbursements to St. Joseph for emergency work already done.
Is there a number?
For the remaining amount?
For the remaining amount.
Budgeted amount, the remaining.
The remaining budget amount of $45,838.
So, all right, the remaining is $45,838, we're, we are paying half the $29,700 for the whole, well, $29,700 for the electrical that has not been done, and the remaining portion to reimburse St. Joseph for the past years, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for making.
Ms. Vanessa, do you have, you feel like you have that in front of you captured?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, because I'm not going to repeat it. I'm just going to say, we have, we have a motion on Agenda Item Number 11 by Commissioner Barbara Walker, second by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you, Billy.
As they say, checks in the mail.
All right.
We're going to go to Roden Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker, Agenda Item Number 12, Consideration of Possible Approval of the Replant of King Oaks, Section 4, Block D, Lots 7 and 8. That's our attachment number 12, if I recall. We had a public hearing on that at 8:45 this morning.
We did, if your memory serves you correctly. Just to repeat, they're combining two lots to make a single lot with a total of 2.6 acres, located on 4th Street in King Oaks. We are recommending approval of this replant at this time.
I move to approve a replant of King Oaks, Section 4, Block D, Lots 7 and 8, into Lot 7, or 2nd. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 12, by Commissioner Chad Valles II, by Commissioner Dave Tobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Will go to Agenda Item Number 13, Consideration of Possible Approval of Communication Line Installation Permit on County Road 445, located in Precinct 4, and authorize the county judge as signatory, our attachment number 13. So either Commissioner Cox or Mr. Walker, I'll let you all take the lead.
This is a communications line, a fiber optic line, that Fiber Light is proposing to install, runs between Highway 90 and County Road 447. You may recall, there's a cell tower located on the corner of 445 and 447. This will be an underground line located on the west side of County Road 445. They have met our criteria for the installation, so we are recommending that this installation be approved.
Now, on the document, it has Precinct 2, is it indeed Precinct 4?
It's 445, Precinct 4. Well, it's all in the precinct, but part of 447 is in there.
It is what?
It is in Precinct 4.
Okay, so are we okay to make that change on the document in front of us?
I'll make a motion, yes, if you need to.
On their document, I was going to say.
Yes, sir. We posted it. I mean, it'd be confusing, but.
Is this a high-speed internet?
It's fiber optic. I don't know what they're doing.
No, it's, it's a tower for a cellphone tower that's set up there on 445 and 447.
Thank you.
I don't pretend to understand these things.
And the precinct lies about it in that, in that wrong area. So Commissioner Cox, are you making a motion on that?
I will make a motion, Judge. I move that we approve the communication line installation permit on County Road 445 and 447, located in Precinct 4, and authorize you as signatory.
Is there a second? There is a second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 13, by Commissioner Philip Cox, second by Commissioner Dan Tobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Will now go to Roden Bridge Report.
We're paving. We paved yesterday, we're paving today, we're paving tomorrow. That will complete the, the first course on all our roads, and then next week, we'll start back on second course. We're doing, did South Florida, Roden Valley yesterday, they're doing Burgess today, and then they're going to move down to Rolling Oaks, and do several of the small cul-de-sacs and things that are needing attention in that neighborhood.
Second coat goes faster than first coat?
Second course goes much faster, because all the prep work is done. They just come in and shoot the emulsion, put the rock on it. So I think if the weather continues to stay dry, we will get everything done by the end of the month.
And you have money in the 21 budget to cover first and second coat of this plant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So again, Madam Auditor.
Yes, sir.
If for some reason we had a storm blow in, and he had X miles left over to second coat for next year, how does that money from this year carry to next year?
It, it goes into its own balance, and so.
His own balance?
Right, anything that he does not expend.
Right. But you, he does have the authority to expend it next year?
No, because it's not budgeted for.
I would have to come back and add.
Okay, so my request is, get it done this year.
Talk to the weatherman. We've been dodging the bullets on these storms that have been out there. It's the peak of hurricane season, and lengths could change in a matter of days. The good news is typically October is still warm and dry, and we can finish up if we need to, but we won't have to do a budget amendment. So a budget amendment, therefore.
She's giving you the evil look.
No, no.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you, thank you very much. We'll go to Agenda Item 14, Consider Take Action to Establish the Salary, Expenses, and Other Allowances of Elected Officials or Precinct Officers According to Local Government Code 152.011 and 152.013.
There's no attachment.
There's no attachment. It's what, it was the advertisement that went out?
Yeah.
So that brings us back to what we have, what I have submitted in the preliminary budget.
Proposed.
Proposed. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Shari, we approve this, then you send out letters to all the elected officials, and then that gives them the opportunity, in the event they are not satisfied, they have time, five days, to submit agreements to me, to the county judge, and then we set up their agreement hearing, and that would be on September the 10th. Okay. So with that, since it's kind of my ballpark, I'm going to make a motion that we go with the established salary, expenses, and other allowances for elected officials and precinct officers, and there weren't any adjustments to precinct offices, other than, well, it was just their travel allowances and their colon. Well, and if you had any increases in office expenses or things of that sort. Let me start over. I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 14, which takes to establish the salary, expenses, and other allowances of elected county or precinct officers according to Local Government Code 152.011 and 152.013. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 14, by County Judge Joe Foulton, seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Ms. Wagner, if you'll get those letters out, thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 15, Consider Take Action to Approve the Proposed County Holidays for 2022, that will be our attachment number 15. Commissioners, the schedule that's put in front of you correlates with this year, but taking into consideration holidays that end on Saturdays or Sun, I'm sorry, holidays that fall on Saturdays or Sundays, we're taking the Friday before, or the Monday after, if it's a Sunday. And the dates and the representation are listed before you. I know you've had time to review this, but are there any questions or concerns or requests for adjustments?
I'm making a motion to approve the proposed county holidays for 2022.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 15, by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Agenda Item 16, Consider Take Action Regarding the Burn Ban, and Authorize the County Judge as Signatory. I got the Texas Forest report yesterday, and for our area, they still have no immediate concerns. However, I think commissioners, we need to kind of be on point, because we are starting to dry, and there's a lot of cut hay on the ground, and fence lines are starting to dry up, so I would recommend no action at this time, but we need to stay in tune. And I have had calls from any of the chiefs recommending a burn ban.
We had a grass dry down on 249 last night.
And I didn't know.
Grass, the grass has really dried a lot in the last couple of days with the dry weather we've had. I hope this yesterday, I ran holes. I had hope this yesterday, I ran holes, fresh cut grass, it's just laying over and staying there. It's not pocket bad, so it's really dry out.
Well, I recommend no action, but we need to stay tuned. We do have another meeting on September 15th. If we need something before, then please put me on alert, Commissioner. Okay. So no action on number 16. On agenda item number 17, receiving any updates on the strategic plan? Not at this time, but that will go to agenda item number 18. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? I move with adjourn. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 18 by Commissioner David Dobianski, second by Commissioner Chad Malley. Open for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. We're adjourned, time is.